Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. It's always good to have Reverend Hales with us this morning, and he's going to come and lead us in the invocation. And if we could stand and please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's go ahead and pray. Father in heaven, I do thank you and praise you for this good day. We had a great rain last night to help nourish the earth, so we're grateful for that. Lord Jesus, yesterday was Independence Day, where we are so grateful and thankful for all who have given and fought for this country so we can have liberty because we have a God who wants all people to be free. And Lord Jesus, I just want to thank you for Culpeper County. You have blessed this county. It is a great place to live and grow, Lord God, and never let us forget the blessings that we have in this very place. And I pray for all of our Board of Supervisors today, Lord God, that you would bless them in their meeting and deliberations. Give them direction and guidance through your Holy Spirit. I pray all these things in the name of our Savior alone, Jesus Christ of Nazareth. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. I'd like to go ahead and call to order our July 5th Board of Supervisor Morning Meeting and ask Supervisor Dur if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this morning, I kind of want to piggyback on what Pastor Hales, Pastor Brad, was mentioning earlier about Culpeper. And I'm feeling very patriotic this morning toward Culpeper. Went to all the festivities yesterday for July 4th, and I wore my hat, Culpeper, right here. It says Culpeper founded 1759. And that was the town. The town was founded in 1759, and the county was founded in 1749, 10 years earlier. But yesterday, walking down Davis Street and seeing 200 cars lined up in that car show, and seeing all the people there enjoying the festivities, and then walking down by the depot and seeing the band playing and the ensemble there as far as the patriotic tunes they were playing, and then being involved later on in the patriotic presentation. It was an amazing day. And living in Culpeper, and I've lived here, like many of us here today, all of my life, Culpeper is special. And we may go through some trials and tribulations, but no group, or person, or circumstance, or situation is ever going to make me feel like Culpeper is not the best place to live in this world. And I love it here, and we have one heck of a history. And the boards, our boards in the past have got us where we are today, and we're only getting better. And it's been amazing what we've accomplished, and it's due to good decision-making and our community partners. And Culpeper is only going to get better for years to come. And it's a special place for me, and I just wanted to say that this morning. All right, moving on to the agenda. Any changes, any additions or deletions to the agenda this morning, or a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, and I'll turn this over to our County Administrator, John Eggersen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Good morning, members of the board. We have several items on consent this morning. Beginning with item A, the board will consider acceptance and appropriation of a grant in the amount of $182,000 for the Culpeper County Sheriff's Office from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Under item B, the board will consider acceptance of a grant in the amount of $250,882 for the Culpeper County Sheriff's Office from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Under item C, the board will consider acceptance and appropriation of a grant in the amount of $253,382 for a cooperative partnership with the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services Board from the Opioid Abatement Authority. Under item D, the board will consider acceptance of a donation and a budget amendment in the amount of $1,000 for the sheriff's office. The donation was made by Linda Willoughby, and the sheriff wishes to use the funds for the cadet program. Under item E, the board will consider acceptance of a grant and a budget amendment in the amount of $1,500 for the options program. The grant is from the Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services Board for drug screening supplies. Under item F, the board will consider acceptance of a donation and a budget amendment in the amount of $1,000 for the Parks and Recreation Department. The donation is for the Vince Vala Music Program. And under item G, the board will consider appropriation of grant funds from the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. The funds to be appropriated are in the amount of $16,780 for the first year of a three-year award totaling $90,000. No local match is required.
Okay. Comments, questions, motion?
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Any changes to the June 6 a.m. or p.m. meeting minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. General County business, we have two items today. The board will discuss and consider approval of an amendment to an option agreement related to the Lightfoot Apartments project. Now, go ahead and turn this over to John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the agenda indicates, this item is related to our partnership with People Incorporated and the town to create the Lightfoot Apartment Affordable Housing Project. We currently have an option agreement that the town and the county have both executed with People Inc. for this project, and originally that was set to expire March 31st of 2023. The town and the county both subsequently approved an amendment to that option agreement that extended the date to July 31st, 2023. And at this time, People Inc. is requesting a second extension or second amendment to that option agreement, which would further extend the date to January 31st of 2024. I do want to assure the board that the project has all of its tax credits in place that have been requested, and other grants from multiple sources, and all indications are that the project is fully feasible and would not require any further extensions beyond this one. And if the board has any questions that I can't answer, Brian Ailey from People Inc. is here today and can give you an update if you'd like to hear.
Thank you, John. It's the pleasure of the board.
I move for approval of the extension of the option to January 31st, 2024. I would also note that in addition to everything John mentioned, there has been an increase of grant funding from PD9, so things are actually looking even better.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Next, the board will receive an update regarding operations at the Field House from our Parks and Rec Director, Andrew Hardy. Glad to have you here today, sir.
Yes, sir. How's everybody doing today?
All right. Because I cannot see, and I am blind. Let me see if I can get this squared up and good to go. So, real quick, the initial thought behind this presentation was it was going to be focused solely on the Field House. But I know in my brief time here, I've never had the opportunity to really come up and give an annual report about where the department stood, whether it was COVID or other various issues. We really thought that this was a great opportunity to let the board know, and all the people watching, you know, through Culpeper Media's outlets, where the department was and where we have come from since going back, you know, 2018, 2019. So what we're going to talk about today is just the department overview, revenue reports, the Field House, the financial aid data, the Park Services, sports tourism, and then just some headlines if we look back this year on where we are. So, real quick, everybody knows the mission statement of the department. To keep it real simple and not read all the language, is just to improve the quality of life for all residents within the county. The department structure on the admin side, we've got five full-time personnel, and then on the Park Services side, six full-time personnel. And each of those duties, you'll see that they do everything from program development to delivery to evaluation. And then on the Park Services side, they handle all the parks, trails, and all those really great green spaces that we have throughout the county. As far as the administration division, we did a five-year, pretty much, look back as far as going all the way back to July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019, and then where we are, July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023. Now, these reports, we pulled them for the sake of getting it on Board docs, June 13, 2023. Program enrollment going all the way back to July 1, 2018, to June 30th, 2019, was 2,847 individuals. We pretty much looked purple with the next two years because of COVID, then we lost half a year pretty much for COVID as well. So the plus 41% that you see is actually a comparison between July 1, 2021, and June 30th, 2022, where we had 3,569 participants, and then closing out by June 13, 5,043. So a pretty nice jump as far as program enrollment. Now, just to provide clarification, that is participants that were enrolled in our active net classes. So not walk-ins, not drop-ins, nothing related really to the Culpeper County Field House. Folks that were registered for fitness classes, tumbling classes, basketball classes, arts and crafts, music. So over 5,000 individuals, and a 41% jump. Program revenue, 69,20480 the previous year, and then right now, as of June 13th, we were 77,104, so an 11% jump for that number. Rental revenue last year, 26,22950, and then right now, 34,27950, which is a 31% increase. On that line, too, it's not noted within this document, but we also could look at bumping that another 10, because in tourism agreement that we have with National Collegiate Rugby, they provided us with $10,000 worth of equipment for the two field sets of goals and four in-ground sleeves to host their national event. So each of those numbers are our three core. We've seen pretty good improvements within that data and that information. As far as the Field House, which is the primary reason, I think, why we are here today as well, it officially opened on December 2nd. And then, right now, between when this report was pulled, this report actually was June 19th. We've seen 19,449 individuals come through that facility. Now, that is a door counter that we have that tracks those individuals. But when you're looking at the first six and a half, seven months of a facility, to say we're just under 20,000 individuals, that's an extremely good number in our personal opinion. Expenses for that time period, $34,26101, and those facility expenses, as noted below, include the electrical, heat, water and sewer, phone, internet, maintenance, and supplies. Part-time hours expenses, $27,350, for a total of $61,56151. Now, to look at what the revenue is as of June 19th, we were at 67,53838. Now, this is where it does provide a little bit of explanation, and then how you guys would like to interpret that. The items that we have under facility revenue, you'll see daily access, membership, other services, facility rental, sports programs, and summer camps. Those are all programs that are specifically, you could say, tied to that facility. Under the program revenue, those are also classes that are tied to the Field House because they're held within the Field House. Now, whether we want to kind of include them in that revenue, I'll leave that to y'all's discretion, but we felt that it was nice to show what revenue programs generated at that facility. So 67,53838 for facility revenue for those items, and then 25,136 for those. So then if you add them, obviously, the total is 92,67438. We feel that these numbers are really going to increase as we continue to develop our brand and offer more programming. And the one area that we're really targeting going to the next fiscal year is our sports programs division. As you'll see with the 13,220, that came from basketball programs, pickleball clinics, rugby clinics. We started the middle school youth volleyball league with Orange and Madison County, and we're getting ready to step into more adult programming also going forward. So we should see that number increase. Our financial aid program, this is something the department, I know the county is extremely proud of as well. Last year, residents, the county, local businesses, et cetera, provided a good amount of funds to support this program that allowed us to have one universal process of qualifying for financial aid. In '22, '23, we received grant total of 81,830, and we have an additional 100,000 committed for '23, '24, '25, and '26. Since January 1, which was the official launch date of that program, we've had 23 participants in the Access Assistance Program, and 22 in the Youth Sports Financial Aid Program for grant total of $4,100, leaving us with the remaining balance of 77,730. Now, these, we do feel, are also going to kick up, because when we launched it January 1, the only sports remaining were the spring seasons, because winter sports had already commenced with basketball and wrestling and so forth. We're just getting ready to finish up a campaign through social media on pushing this access program. And then when schools get in session, we're also going to have flyers that we're going to distribute to the elementary schools and CCPS to get the word out for this program as well. Our Park Services Division, many of those folks, they are, I guess, your quiet heroes for our division. They're out there, you know, throughout the day, maintaining our quality green spaces. I know we get tons of compliments for Mountain Run, the Sports Complex, Lynn Park, and Spillman, and we can't give those guys enough credit within that division. But fun fact, just for them, you know, in an annual year, they mow 14,592 acres. Now, for folks that, you know, mow a small in-town lot, or a larger farm in the outskirts of the county, that's a lot. And that's not even including the trails that they maintain at Lynn. Most of you guys have seen the work that they put in at Mountain Run Lake Park since we acquired it, and how that property looks. Spillman's the exact same way. We completely put in 18 brand-new concrete tee boxes. And another interesting fun fact with this, and we found that out at our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting a couple weeks back, that Spillman is the 11th-ranked disc golf course in the state of Virginia. And that was pre-concrete tee pads. So hopefully, with those improvements, we're going to be able to crack the top 10. But that is really astounding to know that that's how highly ranked that course is, and that's by players of the course. So it's not some, you know, universal, you know, group that's going out there and putting it. It's actually players and their reviews on that course. Sports tourism, again, this has been a huge initiative of our division for the longest time now, and we feel that it is having a quality economic impact. Just this year alone was the first year that we were able to host National Collegiate Rugby's Women's Semifinals. That fielded eight teams. Then that following weekend, we hosted the Men's National Semifinals. Then the Rugby Virginia States, that's the third year that they've come and seen us. And then, starting tomorrow, we'll have the Little League States for minors and majors softball. So if you have an opportunity tomorrow, open ceremony start at 6 o'clock, down on Field 10 at the Sports Complex. And then the 22nd this month, we'll have the Rugby Virginia Seven State Championships. Because of our commitment, and the staff as a whole, and the community, we've been able to also lock many of these events up. Next year, the Cardinal Cup will be the first time NCR is bringing that event to Virginia, and that will be every Virginia rugby squad. So VMI, Longwood, ODU, Virginia Tech, UVA, competing in that individual tournament, followed by the women's again, the men's again, and then the Little League States for minors and majors baseball in July. Once we get to the 22nd, we will add two additional, which will be those Rugby Virginia Fifteens and the Sevens again. But we're in negotiations with them right now because they're changing over their presidents. As far as headlines go, I think this was given by the entire team. You know, number one was improving the workplace culture and the department's positioning within the community. You know, Parks and Rec, we do believe is an essential service, and over these many years, we're really establishing that. The second is a Start on Success program in partnership with CCPS. For those who may not know about that program, definitely take an opportunity to take a look at it. It provides an opportunity for students to get gainful employment and experience. And through that program, we had five students that worked with us. And of the five, we've actually hired two to now gain part-time employment with us. Grand opening of the Field House, obviously, on the 2nd of December. Sports tourism and the National Collegiate Rugby in the states for Little League are reimagining rec. This is something that's also near and dear to us, looking at adaptive sports programming. And we talk about access for all from the financial standpoint, but access for all also means ability for any individual to participate in programs and activities. We've got an entire plan for this, and we're hoping to bring to you guys next month for some approval, that we've got some funds that just got approved, and we hope that you guys will be excited about the access for all, obviously, the financial aid. And then number seven is also one that we are extremely thrilled about, is the new partnership that we have with Orange County Parks and Recreation and Madison County Parks and Rec that established the first year of the Middle School Volleyball League. With our communities together, we're going to be able to look at so many other program options, such as summer youth basketball, adult programming. And the sizes of our community will not prevent us from running those leagues. You know, when you look to Northern Virginia, when you look to the Tidewater region, they have such a huge population, they have no problem running leagues. Now, with our three communities, and Green wants to come on board as well, whether we put two teams in, we put three teams in, we're going to be able to operate very professional leagues long into the future for our community. So, at that time, that's the presentation, and I'll field any questions that y'all may have.
It looks like revenue is exceeding expenses. Should we lower prices? Our goal is to make a profit.
With that, I would lean towards no. And the primary reason is the process of Parks and Rec is to make affordable recreational options. And right now, if you look at our price points, we are very affordable. We've implemented the financial aid to also cover those in need. And looking to the future, there is going to become a world where that facility will have maintenance requirements, potential additional staffing needs because of the interest in programs, that I would hold pat where we're at now.
Okay, with that, I would suggest that we do create a line item for a capital reserve for repair and maintenance, so that we show that we're roughly breaking even on a profit standpoint.
We can look at that, sir. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Supervisor Underwood. We need to create some type of calculation to where we need to be above what the plan was coming into this, because the plan was to break even. So if, like he said, if we can create some type of calculation to where we want to be a little bit above that before we start dropping the rates for membership and for access fees, okay. But actually, today is the first update that you've given us, and that's according to plan that we've had when we went into this, is to give an update to the public to let them know where the money is going, what money's coming in, the money's going out for the scholarship program, if you're contributing to that scholarship program, where we are twice a year. And we're in accordance with our plan, and I love seeing this. I thought it was a good update, and agree that we need to create a calculation percentage, I think, maybe with John, and get together and maybe present it back to the board next month.
We can investigate that.
Great update. I'm glad to see it so used. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, no old business, no new business. Committee reports. Supervisor Underwood, Public Works.
All right, yes, sir. Committee brings forward a motion that the board authorized staff to submit applications for two VDOT revenue sharing projects with a total cost of $14.45 million. The projects will provide significant safety improvements on White Shop Road, Route 603, and Reva Road. This is Section 644.
Okay. Can I get a second to open it up for discussion?
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
With $14.45 million, maybe a discussion of how we got here and what we're doing would be warranted. So with that, first, I would like to thank the other members of the committee. Supervisor Dur has been hanging out in Reva and White Shop, looking at the roads, seeing what we're talking about. Bates, Paul Bates is also very familiar with both. The consultants have done a bunch of work, and the figures have been all over the place. We received a figure once of, I think, $46.8 million, and have gone around a lot of different directions. But the goal is to create a template to be able to improve our collectors throughout the county. And every two years, there's $10 million of local money in the budget, and up to another 10 million in match from the state. So ideally, we could take advantage of that 20 million available resources to improve collectors everywhere. This is the initial template.
So I do have some comments. I know that, so I looked through both of these, White Shop and Reva, and I do have concerns about the Reva Road with the fact that we would be creating two additional roads, which would require them to be maintained afterwards. And it also, in an RA district, provides both of the landowners triple the road frontage to be able to divvy that off into housing lots, which would increase the traffic on those roads and maybe negate the safety that was put there to take out those curves. So I'm kind of concerned on the Reva Road issue to the fact that it seems to benefit two landowners quite more significantly than everybody else. And also the fact that we've been pushing Stevensburg Road every year continuously, continuously, and it still has its issues. We have four bus routes that go directly on that road. We have our Field House that's off that road, our high school, soon to be our pool. The traffic counts are going to do nothing but increase. So I would like to see a reduction in the 11-some-million that's going to Reva Road, or to add back Stevensburg Road instead.
Couple of things to that. One, Stevensburg Road is next on the list. We've discussed it repeatedly, and one mistake that I'll take responsibility for, I guess, as Chair of Public Works, is we probably should have had it through this process anyway, because there's additional funding, and we want to get it done sooner rather than later. So that's definitely a priority. In terms of the two landowners, I'm one of the landowners, so I feel the need to address that directly. The quote incremental frontage, I don't know if it's increasing the total footage, because there is Kelly Ridge Road that is being eliminated, if you look at the plan, for at least the part that I have. That said, my plan, as I've stated all along, is to donate any right-of-way and do solely what will improve the safety for the community. It has to go through my property. There's no other way to get to 29 without going through my property for the 2,500-plus vehicles a day going down that road. And in terms of others, they could divide, but neither landowner has divided either of that land since the projects were last done in 1986. In fact, both sides of the road are still one tax map parcel. So I see the concern. Frankly, I believe we need to Frankly, uh, I believe we need to improve the collectors.
Well, anyone else?
In looking at the improvements on Reva Road, I, I do believe the, the idea that we have is the right concept and is going to give us the, the safest and best road going forward. Yeah, we're taking out some curves, we're adding some new pieces in there, but I believe as you look at the traffic count and you look at the best way to handle that traffic, I think this is the right answer.
Sam, do you have anything you want to add? I see you smiling back there. Come on up, come on up.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that I'll add, uh, as far as the discussion to go back between the three roads and why these two kind of rose to the top was that both of White Shop Road and Reva Road have an identified V-Trans safety need segment on them. That segment of Stevensburg does not currently, even though it's one of our priorities, it does not meet or rise to the level that VDOT considers right now. So we'll need to work on that, uh, but that's why those two roads kind of moved to the top of the list, so. Just wanted to add that a little bit to that. Pre-applications are done, uh, for these roads, but the full application, uh, the board would need to authorize staff to do that prior to October 2nd. On behalf of the answer any further questions? That alignment for 29 does match the comp plan alignment, uh, that the board did look at recently with the conference of plan for 2023, um, that the ending point at Kelly Ridge Road does come out to a brighter point for us to make a future connection to a better access point on Route 29. Gets it away from that curve on Route 29 today.
And you were facilitating this with Public Works, correct?
Public Works Committee, along with our consultant EPR. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Anybody else?
Just one more question, consultant. With the fact that we've received so many different variations of numbers and are, are we confident that they have provided sound information for these applications?
We are at this level. Uh, we were not in the beginning. Uh, but at this point, we have double-checked their numbers, uh, with some other folks, um, and the numbers that are in the pre-application cycle right now, um, I am comfortable that if the county were to move forward, we could basically build those two segments of roads.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any, anybody else before I call the question? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay. Ms. Zellus, I believe that was six to one in favor. Ms. Gagino, not in favor. Okay. Is that all Supervisor Underwood?
Yes, sir, that's all. Thank you.
All right, building grounds, uh, Ms. Campbell? Okay, no action there. Rules Committee, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The committee brings forward a motion that the board authorize the advertisement of a public hearing to consider an amendment in the zoning ordinance to increase the height limit allowable, allowable for structures in the light industrial zoning district. The increased height would apply to structures which are qualifying businesses and designated technology zones.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next, the committee brings forward a motion that the board approve an amendment to Article Four of the Culpeper County Purchasing Resolution. The amendment would increase the construction contract amount threshold for which the, uh, performance and payment on would be required from a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand.
Second for discussion purposes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yes, sir. Uh, I believe state code, uh, allows us to increase it to five hundred thousand. I know there are particular needs, the reason that we looked at three hundred, I, I think it would be interest, in the interest of the county to go ahead and go to five hundred thousand.
John, can I get your opinion on that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the purpose behind this is to, some of the smaller jobs that we bid, we have trouble getting bidders because they don't want to post these performance bonds, and that, and that's the reason for coming forward with a proposal to increase it. Mr. Culpepper's here can speak to this, but I think the answer to the question is, for, for him and, and I, that the higher number, the better. Um, I think he brought forward the three hundred thousand because he didn't want to make too big of a jump, but, uh, state code does allow five hundred thousand, so I would be happy with Mr. Underwood's suggestion if that's the board's pleasure.
If the Chairman of Rules is amenable, I would make amendment that we make it five hundred thousand rather than one hundred.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, that's, um... I need to reread the, uh, motion, but we would, uh, raise the performance and payment bond would be required from the one hundred thousand to five hundred thousand.
And that's a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second to the amended, uh, statement.
Mr. Rosenberg's smiling because of Robert's rules, I think, but...
I wouldn't rob the rule. I, I understand the concerns about him paying the performance bond, but the performance bond is not a bad thing. You get in the situation, if you don't tap a performance bond, you're going to wish you did.
I certainly agree with that when it comes to VDOT road acceptance. I'm not, I'm not as familiar, and maybe Mr. Culpepper can come up and give us his opinion on that, uh, as far as the procurement process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Hi, yes, uh, the, uh, Procurement Office did request three hundred thousand, uh, raise from one hundred thousand. Uh, we do not have a problem with one hundred thousand. Code of Virginia, it does, is one hun, five hundred thousand for construction projects, three hundred fifty thousand for road, uh, projects. It also should be noted that, uh, the definition under the Procurement Act is construction is considered new construction, renovation, and demolition also. And there's nothing in the resolution that precludes the purchasing agent from requiring a bid or bond payment. It depends on the high risk involved of it. So if you have a demolition proj, a demolition project that is estimated to be hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars, I can see that's not a really high-risk, uh, performance bond requirement. When we do ask for a performance bond, contractors do, it's a four to five percent raise on the competitive bid when it does come in. So, but obviously, anything that's high-risk construction, I would see, regardless of the price, I would see a performance or a payment bond on that. It's just the five hundred thousand dollars, it is, that is our, uh, threshold limit right there, and I believe that it'd be a, a good thing. It should be noted that the a hundred thousand dollars was implemented in nineteen ninety-six, twenty-seven years ago, so it's about time for an upgrade.
Mr. Chairman, if I could kind of add in on that, if, if I may, that when we do these projects, these contractors are required by law to have errors and omissions insurance, is that right?
That is correct.
So I look at, from the three hundred thousand, and I agree with Mr. Rosenberg, that, that's nothing, the, the performance bond is essential on these big projects, but what we're seeing when we put these things out for bid, when you're only getting one or two contractors because they don't want to pay that additional five to ten percent, it's costing the taxpayers a tremendous amount of money because we don't have a competitive bid, if you would. They realize that. So I think that the difference between the three hundred and the five hundred, the two hundred thousand dollars, and as you've indicated, that you have the ability to require that depending on the severity of the compet, the, the occasions of the job, um, I don't, I don't feel any reservations about going to the five hundred thousand. I think that would, uh, if that's what the state law allows, that would increase the competitiveness on the bids.
Mr. Chairman, my concern's been addressed.
Okay, I have one, one question, uh, going back to VDOT. Are you, this, are you including this with VDOT road acceptance projects?
The county, uh, we really don't, uh, put out any projects where the Procurement Office doesn't for road construction, so that really precludes us right there since VDOT handles all that, it's under the state instead of the county.
Mr. Chairman, if I can also clarify that, you, our subdivision and other ordinances require these performance bonds, I want a developer is, is building a new road, so that, this would not impact that in any way.
Just wanted to make sure of that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Culpepper.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on, for the five hundred thousand dollars. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay, is that all, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir.
All right, Economic Development Director Report, Brian Rothemel.
Good morning, board, and happy Wednesday. Today, I want to talk to you about Foundation First, uh, organization that I'm a part of. This is from our, uh, relates to our strategic plan about, uh, work, strengthening the workforce, workforce pipeline to prepare residents for our twenty-first century jobs. Early childhood education, it helps the current workforce that is looking for something to do for, with their children during the workday. It also helps our work, our future workforce. Uh, early in my economic development career, took a economic development class and asked a workforce person, if you had a million dollars, what would you do with that? Kind of just, just wanted to see what, what's the best way to put any money towards? He said, it's easy, it's early childhood education. If we have our children starting behind, they're going to be behind all the way through, and that will come out in the workforce, because the problem is that's a long-range plan. So I've always kind of taken that to heart and thought about that, uh, as we work through our workforce. A student, as I said, students who are behind are always playing catch-up, and early childhood education, I firmly believe, is part of the economic development process, just as much as we talk about our high school students, middle school ele, elementary, and then early childhood education. Foundation First is, previously was known as Smart Beginnings Repahanic, uh, covers the Ready Region North Central. Our Ready Region is very large, that's divvied up by the state, goes from Loudon down to us and over to, um, Caroline County, includes Stafford. So think of it as a, a giant L, um, in the northern part of Virginia. We, the Foundation First is, administers the Virginia Quality Birth to Five, the BQB V-five system standards for all publicly financed programs that do early childhood education. Works with the communities to help match families to programs when they have a need, but also provides resources to business leaders, um, and the greater community. The vision is all children birth to five have a solid foundation that leads to success, and I am on the Board of Directors for Foundation First. Uh, when they first, funny story, when they first invited me to the interest meeting, I thought they sent it to the wrong person, so I called and asked, are you, are you sure this was supposed to come technol, they said, no, no, we, we need you because we need to make sure that businesses understand why early childhood education is important, and we need that voice at the table. Went and really enjoyed the information, um, and have enjoyed working, uh, with them. Our first workforce luncheon is going to be on September twenty-sixth at the Hilton Performing Arts Center in Manassas. As you can imagine, with a region that large having one centralized location, it's a little bit diff, difficult, but, uh, we feel Manassas is the closest to center. The goal of the luncheon is to educate the org, educate on the organization, and also examples of innovative ways businesses can lean into that childcare, uh, whether that's starting off with just offering additional programming to, all the way to funding a daycare in facilities. So we're going to try to show them all ways that they can help participate and just try to begin that conversation of how industry leaders can help, uh, with early childhood education. So we look forward to the event on September twenty-sixth. That's it.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, Administrator's Report, John?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have anything to, to share today.
All right, then, closed session is next. I'll entertain a motion to take us into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we enter into closed, into a closed meeting as permitted under Virginia Code, Sections two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven, A-1, three, four, six, seven, eight, and twenty-nine, discuss, to discuss and consider, one, citizen appointments to the one cable commission and the Joint Planning Advisory Committee; two, to receive legal advice regarding the potential options, limitations, and liability considerations as to the legal structuring of a jail facility as detailed in the Code of Virginia, the Ad, Virginia Administrative Code, and under the applicable law, and to discuss and consider the acquisition of real property, a jail facility, the award of a public contract, and the investment of public funds therein, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the financial interest, bargaining position, and/or negotiating strategy of the board if made public initially; and three, to receive, to receive legal advice regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to potential litigation involving, uh, public funds.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, we're in closed session.